To those masters club. Yes. As you know that we are a part of the Toastmasters International. And we have a gift to this masters club usually has three sessions. For the meeting, the first session is the prepared speech session. And it will usually be done by the members. So the member of the Toastmaster usually deliver the speech for about four to six minutes. And then we also have that table topic sessions which you all can join. So in this table topic sessions, you guys can choose any numbers and there will be statements that we have. And then you can also agree to that statement or just.
Rus, dah gitu.
Disagree with it. Yeah, and then the session will be the evaluation session. So I guess as DPM Chai is already here, I guess I can start the meeting. So welcome to pediatric chief to this masters club, a place where you can learn and have fun as well. Today's theme will be the next trip. And the word of the day is adventurous. So before anything else, I would like to start the meeting by clapping once. Yay. So when did you guys have your last trip, I guess? Ever since we have this pandemic situation and it's been very hard for all of us. And my last trip was about, well, last year, I guess. I was always home by the, I stayed at home, but I had that hiking last year. I hike through the mountain. And my preference and it was really refreshing, but I guess since this pandemic week, cannot go outside and how about you, Toastmaster Gusti? Would you like to tell a little about your last trip?
Alright, thank you, uh, Tom, Toastmaster Mutia, my last trip. Actually, I went to Bandung with my friend. And at the beginning, we just, uh, went together, only two of us. And she's so patiently driving me because in the middle of the way, I used to have a stomach issue because I eat a lot. So she handled me very well until we arrived in Jakarta safely. And the second, just few weeks later, we went to Bandung again, but this time, uh, we went with the three people, total in three people. So I sit on the back and really enjoyed the trip and relaxing. And my friend, uh, didn't have any issue because I didn't have any stomach issue anymore. So at that time, I learned one of very important lesson. When you're going trip to, uh, also Jakarta or any other city, if you take lots of meals and you didn't feel like can, uh, have the energy or your stomach very full, you can, uh, take it by home or you can, uh, you know, as, uh, bring something to put in the top right. So don't try to eat all at once because your stomach will not, you know, that's all, make it tough.
Okay, what a story. Wow, you're going to Bandung ride. That's it. So without any fuss, join me in welcoming our Toastmasters of the meeting, Toastmaster Miftah.
Thank you so much GE, so yeah, fellow Toastmasters and guests. The next trip in this pandemic is really hard to take a trip. It's take a trip, that's really hard, right? That's really hard, right? And due to pandemic situation, we do a lot of situation in online meeting, online meeting. Right? So for your next, your next maybe to Reja Ampad or to go to Bali or something like that, you, um, really difficult to reach that out, right? Before the pandemic hits us, hit us. Um, we can go, uh, to Bali, we can go to Bandung freely and so on. But for today, we can go trip, right? Maybe the positive things is about, uh, we can go. There is no boundaries to go to other country and talk to them really, right? But there is no adventurous about that. We just go to some, what is that? Some countries in online meeting. We can go, uh, we can, uh, we can cannot talk to them, uh, face to face. Just in the, uh, what is that? In some platform like Zoom or Google Meet or something like that. That's not really adventurous, right? Because of that, so because of that, this pandemic hit us and we cannot go trip to other country to, uh, to, to get our holiday. So even you work at home, right? WFH, uh, it's work from home, not work full hours, right? Right? So that, yeah, because of that, this pandemic hit us really hard. We cannot go holiday and we just work, work and work, work full hours WFH. Okay, thank you so much. Is, is there any other opinion about next trip? Or maybe an adventurous moment that you have when you, uh, before the pandemic hit us? Anyone wants to share? Yeah, Toastmaster Wira. Oh, I think, I think you want to unmute yourself.
Next trip, uh, well, wait, are we talking about the next trip or the trip that I took before the pandemic hit?
It's okay, it's up to you if you want to share with us the, the trip before the pandemic hit us or the pa- after the pandemic, uh, uh, it's a really high rank in this situation. So you wanna go also or not?
When the pandemic ends, I would love to go to either Koban or go to Bogor. Basically just a train trip to Western Java. Just want to try some, you know, just, just wanna do a little long trip on a train, that's it.
Ah, yeah, so you took train to go to, uh, to go somewhere. That's really nice. That's really adventurous. But now when pandemic it's, uh, over, I will do go with train and then do with Angkot maybe, right? Because, um, this pandemic, um, uh, really annoying this situation. Okay, thank you. We can, um, from Toastmaster Wira shared to us, I will go to my general evaluator. We can go to the meeting and start the meeting, okay? Okay, I will call Toastmaster, uh, Chahyani. The adventurous one and please, uh, explain your role.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much, Toastmasters of the meeting, Toastmaster Miftah. So fellow Toastmasters, welcome to the Toastmasters meeting and my name is Chahyani. And I'm going to be the general evaluator for today. As the general evaluator, basically I will evaluate everything that happens during the meeting, right from the start until the end of the meeting. And then I will announce my evaluation at the end of the meeting today at the evaluation session. Then about this task, I will not be doing this alone. I will be working on this assisted by my support system, my evaluation team members. So let's start with the timer first. So the timer for today is Toastmaster Mutia. Toastmaster Mutia, the stage is yours, yay.
Yay, thank you, DPM Chai. So guys, today I will be taking a role as your timer. So in prepared speech, which will be delivered by Toastmaster Ayashi. So his speech will be around four to six minutes. And I will give notes about the time when he delivers his speech. So four minutes, I'm sorry, five minutes with the green background, six minutes yellow background and seven minutes with red background. And for the table topic sessions, which the session which you all can join, it will be one to two minutes speech. So one minute, you will get that green sign, one and thirty seconds. You will get that yellow sign. And two minutes, you will get that red sign. That's it, DPM Chai.
Okay, thank you so much, Toastmaster Mutia. And then now I need to move on to the next evaluation team member, that is the E N W O D counter. The E N W O D counter today, Toastmaster Gusti, will you be able to take the role as well?
First.
Yes, thank you so much, Toastmaster Gusti. The stage, the screen is yours, yay.
Okay, thank you, Madam GE, Toastmaster Chahyani. Okay, uh, so good afternoon, Toastmasters. I am Gusti, your, uh, I know beauty counter. So what is my role? Every time we speak somehow unconsciously we, uh, make like a filler word such, um, um, and then, you know, if we make some like repetition like, you know, you know, I, I. And sometimes we make a lot of pauses, long pauses. And I will count it as the filler words. And also we have like the beauty today, our beauty is adventurous. So every time I speak it, I would like to jot it down. And at the end, I would like to announce how many filler words and how many W D spoken during this meeting. And I will report at the end of the session. That's all, back to you, GE.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Gusti. Now, I would like to introduce the third evaluation team member, that is the grammarian. So the master of the master of grammatical error is Toastmaster Aki. Aki, the screen, the stage is yours, yay.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Chahyani or DPM Chahyani. Uh, as you guys can see, I already said a lot of ah already. So please count that down a little bit. So hi, my name is Shokis Wakartiswara. I am a visiting Toastmaster from SGB Toastmaster and I'm gonna become your grammarian for today. So what exactly is a grammarian? Probably you're gonna say grammar Nazi. Well, it's fifty percent true because I'm gonna hear all of, I'm gonna listen to any grammatical error and I'm try, and I'm gonna share you guys how to fix that grammar, grammatical errors, not just the, not just like the netizen who was always talking from the, but I'm also gonna give you guys some, a bit of, you know, things that will improve your grammar. And again, I'm learning, everybody is learning as well. So if you guys spot any grammatical error or even spot my grammatical error, please tell so. So that is all for me. Thank you so much. And yeah, back to our GE. Thank you, DPM Chai.
So as the E N W O D counter, Toastmaster Aki's task is also to calculate how many times we mentioned the word of the day today. So to remind everyone of you that the word of the day today is adventurous. Adventurous, right, Toastmaster Aki? So now we can start to mention the word of the day adventurous as frequent as possible. Because in a Toastmasters, in some other Toastmasters clubs, they do implement the idea of fine. A fine meaning that when you mention, uh, hmm, uh, you know, you know, and repetitive words or hesitating noises, that will be calculated. And then every time you mention one, uh, one, um, one, uh, or repetitive words, then you will be fined five hundred rupiah per word. However, the good thing, the positive news is that when you mention the word of the day, that will deduct your debt. In other words, every time you deliver any speech during the Toastmasters meeting, please make sure that you mention the word of the day adventurous as frequent as possible. And today we are going to have the table topic session as well. I can see that here we have plenty of pediatric residents and I think.
Ballot counter?
Say again?
How about ballot counter?
Ballot counter later, later, later. So, so now we have many pediatric residents attending our meeting today. So I believe every one of you are adventurous enough to, basically to encourage yourself to contribute in the table topic session today, that is in the impromptu speech session. So prepare yourself because there are, there is a going to be a table topic session in which you can deliver your speech adventurously. Now, the last evaluation team member, that's the ballot counter. So the ballot counter today, let's see who is attending today. So I think, I think I can request the favor from Toastmaster prospective, Toastmaster Stephanie. I see Stephanie Vijaya is here. So Stephanie Vijaya, so I would like to request your willingness to be the ballot counter for today. So do you know what's a ballot counter role?
Uh, good afternoon. Perhaps the ballot can, ballot counter role is to count how many times each member say adventurous and how many times each member say the filler word. Is it correct?
Okay, that's a really good attempt. That's a really good attempt, although it is slightly incorrect. So the task, but nice try, nice try, prospective Toastmaster Stephanie. So the work of a ballot counter is basically to cast the vote. So we are going to have three sessions today. Those are the prepared speech session, table topic session and evaluation session. And in every session, we, whoever attends the meeting today need to vote who is the best speaker in their opinion. So basically, everyone will mention the vote to you, Stephanie. Everyone will chat to you privately and then you will announce the result at the end of the meeting today. So basically, you are going to lead the hall of fame session, yay. Okay, and then now I have introduced all of my evaluation team members. The grammarian, Toastmaster Aki, the smart and brilliant Toastmaster Aki. And then the E N W O D counter, oh, my, my error. The grammarian is correct, right? Hadu, sometimes, yeah, my age. But basically, we have all evaluation team members complete already. Now I need to encourage every one of you because in the Toastmasters meeting, we would like to be encouraging to the speakers. Therefore, try your best to maintain your video on during the meeting today. Because the prepared speaker or every speaker delivering the speeches today, they will appreciate your facial expression and then your perhaps body language just to appreciate whether you understand their speeches and how is your response toward the speech delivery. So try your best to maintain your video on during the meeting today. We are going to have the meeting today until around five fifteen. Okay, so that concludes my introduction in the general evaluation session. Now I will pass the control to the Tom of today. Tom, over to you, yay, Miftah.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Chahyani and his, and her team. So yeah, for today's meeting, we have one prepared speaker and will be evaluated by Toastmaster Gusti. Toastmaster Gusti, are you ready to take this adventurous? Okay, thank you so much, Toastmaster Gusti. Okay, I will ask to unmute yourself. Thank you so much.
Uh, can I, can I take five minutes, uh, for a while, please? Take five minutes, yeah.
Okay, no worries. While we, while we just have Toastmaster Gusti. So yeah, for today's meeting, we will have Toastmaster Ayashi. And will be evaluated, uh, we will be evaluated by Toastmaster Gusti. You can take the chance to, uh, to be the prepared speaker for today's meeting. How, how was your viewing? How was your feeling, Toastmaster Ayashi? Please unmute yourself and be with me.
Okay, I feel a little bit nervous, li- just a little bit, just a little bit. But, but I feel so enthusiastic because there is a lot of people here, more than thirty people today.
Yeah, that's really great. There are one hundred people and the other is invisible, right? So yeah. Okay, because you all, uh, because Toastmaster Gusti will, will present you. So yeah, I will remove you from the spotlight so, uh, you, uh, everyone didn't know who is the speaker. Okay, Toastmaster Gusti, the screen is yours.
Okay, thank you, uh, Tom, Toastmaster Miftah. Very good afternoon for Toastmasters. So today, um, in this meeting, we have like prepared speech session. What is that? It's actually the member want to deliver project that they learn from the pathway, a curriculum program for those masters. And today, uh, our member, Toastmaster IS, will deliver one of his project from the curriculum. And the project is about the mid-connections through networking, through networking. And time given is five until seven minutes. And the purpose of this speech first, for the member to develop and practice a personal strategy for building. And the second, for the member to share some aspect of his or her experience by networking. So we are offered to stay same, Toastmaster IS, Toastmaster IS, stay same.
Okay. To stay sane in a mid world is the true victory, Marty Rubin. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster and distinguished guests. When COVID nineteen happened, it affect to many sector of life, such as your school, your family, your work, your business or even your personality. Yes? We usually shake hand, talk to each other directly, gather in the night, went to office. But now, we hard to do that anymore. Everything has changed. It made us crazy, right? Do you feel the same? Type number one, please, on chat box. Yes, so do I. You all suffer trauma during pandemic that has been run almost two years. I can feel what you feel, but silence is not good option. Doing nothing equals die. We have to escape soon through the situation. And I think we've definitely become much aware of mental health. This is real thing. The mental health affect strong and healthy people. We have to end this craziness and find a real solution. In addition, Simon Sinek say, comes of COVID nineteen, we recognize just the importance of human connection. So that's why I look for the solution. I want, I need positive vibes. I want to connect with people. Then I search, found and register myself to webinar solusi pandemic on Tuesday night, August tenth, two thousand twenty-one. I got the access and I join it. In that seminar, we understood that most people have problem. Anyone here who has no problem, please type number two. Okay, I don't see anyone. It means, please don't feel alone. Because nineteen percent of human being in the world is facing top three problems that health, economy and mental. After that, I followed the presentation and the speaker began to share to audience about the pandemic solution. Point number one is realizing true, is realizing healthy of basic. The speaker talked a lot about the immunity secret. And I learn from here, there are two affairs that should we save, the inside and of outside the body. For inside the body, antioxidant and alkaline intake have mean, have rule, have an important rule in the maintaining the body. It against many diseases and help the body in order to healthy condition. It usually took from the fruit, vegetable and some, some type of water. There is also pH balance chart. pH is potential of hydrogen. And human but, and human blood and human started blood level pH is at seven point three six five. It's natural. Also, it's also endorsed by Dr. Otto Henry Warburton. And after that, I've checked it and I found that antioxidant is very useful to prevent COVID virus develop in the body. And for outside the body, there is hippoclorous acid. A perfect weapon to fight germs, bacteria and virus. I can we, and we can spray it as much as we want to all object, to our skin or to all face. It's safe and good grip and it also threaten on World Health Organization website. And the second point, the, the number two is realizing healthy of financial. I reflect myself and what happened in the world in the last two years. I see a lot of people depressed because they lost their job. Retirement has happened in many sector and companies. They have to survive with whatever they do for feeding their family. I know it's bad news, but in the same time, pandemic situation fertilize Indonesia's rich people. It is fun fact, but it's real. So the speaker told us the best momentum to be rich or to be entrepreneur is right now in this moment. And point number three is realizing healthy of mind. Happiness is something we really want to achieve in the life. We work for happiness, not for money, right? And it takes effort to achieve that. The two of them, positive environment and giving to each other. And I totally agree with this. We depend on our environment and we can just leave and we can just wisely in order to we get happiness. After that, after I followed the presentation a lot until thirty past nine PM, I drone with the topic from the speaker. And I thought to myself, thanks God, this is what I need. This is what I want. This is what I look for. I can tell you here all, but the most important thing is I'm so grateful because I could join the event and I could say that it was an impactful event that I ever joined. And after that, I follow the WhatsApp group. I want to connect and process with them and absolutely win the pandemic days with them. So ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster and distinguished guests. You think you are strong. You think you are great. It's hard to start with this relationship in a moment of crisis. You should know that for everything to change, you have to change. For everything to get better, you have to get better. No cry alone. It's time for us to fight together and stay healthy, stay sane and connect with people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Ayashi. How did you feel when you already delivered your speech? Unmute yourself.
Alhamdulillah. Alhamdulillah. Uh, I'm very happy because I have time, I have chance to deliver this speech and I've learned a lot from this seminar. Uh, I, I very love the topic, how to overcome the pandemic in the hard time like this.
Yes. And then you shared to us. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Ayashi. Okay, that's all for our prepared speech session for today's meeting. So I will call upon to a table topic master for the next session and give your presentation. Before that, I will call timer first. Toastmaster Mutia, also yeah, Toastmaster Mutia, please report your timer. After that, you can start your table topics.
Yes, thank you, this master of meeting, this master Miftah. So this master Ayashi is eligible to be voted as the best speaker for the prepared speech session. Yay, congratulations, this master Ayashi is, he delivered his speech within seven minutes and thirty seconds. So yes, so now everyone, I would like to start the most awaited session of all. Yay, which is table topic sessions. So the, in this table topic sessions, there will be questions or statements. You guys can choose any numbers that you would like to have. And I will show you the question and you have one to two minutes to answer those questions or you guess can state if you agree or disagree with the statements. I will share you. The first speaker, we have the smarter Shauki. Yay, this master Shauki, are you there?
Yes.
Glad to have you here. So which number would you like to choose?
Okay, because today is the twenty-third of August and August is the eighth month of this year. I'm gonna choose number five. Everybody shock yeah, why that number?
Toastmaster Shauki, skydiving or bungee jumping?
What?
Skydiving or bungee jumping, this master Shauki?
Thirty seconds to think, this is hard. Those two options are really, really hard. If I have the chance to choose either both of their body jumping or skydiving. Oh, hell no, I will not do that, both of that. I will not do that at all. One, I'm scared of height. Two, I'm scared of physically dying. Because you know, falling into a cliff and you only rely on that small, small, you know, rope. It's just insane. But sometimes we need to take a leap. Sometimes we need to take a leap to the unknown. Because it is very, very crucial for us to be prepared and to be adventurous in our, in our darkest hour. Sometimes it's hard to get out from our comfort zone. Sometimes it's very hard for us to face our fears. But in the end of the day, we need to take those chances. We need to be those, that adventurous. The world cannot peace, the world will be changing over and over again. And our comfort zone will getting smaller, smaller, and smaller. So people, face your fears and always take a leap of faith. Because we'll never know what is in store from us in the other side. So please, please do not be afraid because I believe in you. And hopefully you believe in me as well. Thank you.
Yay, thank you, this master Shauki. I hope that you're man of your word. It's very like, I hope that.
If you're asking me to skydiving and body jumping, I will think of many, many excuses. Oh, I broke my ankle.
Uh, no. Oh, yes, thank you, this master Shauki. Oh, we're going to have our second speaker then. It will be our second speaker is perspective this master Stephanie, right? Perspective this master Stephanie, are you there?
Yes, present.
Yes, so do you understand how this is going? You can just use any numbers.
Um, I think I'll pick nine.
Nine then. Perspective this master Stephanie, solo trip or group trip? Perspective this master Stephanie, solo trip or group trip?
Um, I think I'll prefer group trip. Okay, first, uh, we have to talk about adventurous, right? So I think there's no difference from, between going on a solo trip or group trip. Uh, you can still be adventurous, uh, in a group. I had one experience before, uh, I had a group trip around Europe with many people that I did not know. So we just assemble in one city and then we went to uh, one city and then another. I think it's a very adventurous experience because we get to meet many people from different parts of the world and we get to explore new parts of the world together. So it's a different experience. And compared to solo trip, I think, uh, for me personally, uh, I will describe myself as a more extroverted person. So I think I'll be lonely if I go on a solo trip and there will be not, no one to talk to. Although, uh, it's still adventurous to talk to strangers. Uh, but if anything happen, for example, emergency, there will be no one to save me there, perhaps. Or, uh, nobody is adventurous enough to save a stranger. Uh, when I got hit by a car or I fall into a hole, yeah, I, I think that's part of being adventurous, actually, uh, jumping to something that you don't know, not knowing, uh, whether you'll be safe or not. But that's a bit, uh, outside my comfort zone. I think I need to make sure that I'm safe while being adventurous. I think I use adventurous quite a lot. And, uh, hopefully, um, this is a good start. Um, yeah, uh, I'm looking forward for this pandemic to end and to travel with lots of my newly formed uh, friends in the pediatric residency because we are going to do a lot of adventure together inside, uh, Cipto Mangunku Sumo and outside, I think we're, will be a quite adventurous batch. Thank you.
Yay, thank you, perspective this master Stephanie. You did really well for the first time being speaker in a table topic session. It is awesome to hear your adventurous experience. And welcome to pediatric to this master's club and you will be having more adventures here. And we have our next speaker. Wait, it will be, yes, perspective this master Adrian, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, don't start the timer yet, please. I'm not prospective Toastmaster, I'm Toastmaster.
Oh.
Bell Malaysia Toastmaster Club.
So where do you come from?
Bell Malaysia.
Oh, welcome then.
Yeah, so this is, this is my first time with the Pediatrics Toastmaster Club. Uh, Toastmaster Iksan is my brother. He's supposed to be grand marion today.
Yes, he told me he won't be coming today to see his brother while joining our team today. So welcome.
Yes, I did. I came few times.
Which number would you like to choose? Smack it, uh, just master, uh, Adrian, Adrian, travel is never a matter of money, but of courage. Travel is never a matter of money, but of courage, this master Andrea.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, travel is never a matter of money, it's a matter of courage. It is a matter of money as well. If you do not have the money in the first place, you will, you will find it very difficult to travel around. I'll tell you about my story, my recent story, and the theme today is really, really intriguing for me. Because I recently went through an adventure of my own. I left Malaysia after sixteen years living there. I resigned from my job to completely new adventure. I've been always adventurous since I was a kid. I explore a lot. I've been curious forever, but I always have this, um, you know, uh-oh. I always have this fear of not having enough cash to actually resign to try new adventure. But then again, I found out that last year, when we were on lockdown and Malaysia in, in the worst lockdown in Indonesia, and I was stuck here for about six months. I found that I actually have enough to live. I don't need a lot to live. So I took the leap and I left my job, taking a break from my career. And you know what? I can say with hundred percent certainty that I will be on amazing adventure. Why? One, I'm financially independent. Two, I have all the time in the world and all the energy in the world. And three, I feel like I can do anything I want. And that's the beauty of traveling and following your courage. Thank you very much. Back to you, table topic master.
Wow, it is so adventurous to hear your story. So we do need money and courage to travel a lot, right? Yeah. Thank you, this master Andrea. So we have our next speaker, this master Ferdi, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Am I visible and audible? Hello?
Yes, you're visible and audible. Which number would you like to choose?
Hmm, since my favorite number seven was taken, I'm going to choose lucky number one.
Wow, lucky number one then.
Wow, okay.
This master Ferdi, Antarctica expedition or space travel? Antarctica expedition or space travel, this master Ferdi.
Alright. Antarctica expedition or space travel? I didn't see that coming. And actually, I feel really, really lucky because now I have the chance to use a quote from one of the authors of the book that I read. The author is called Michael Okuda. His quote is, if there's a question of why, and there's a question, why not? Do you know what kind of book I'm, I was reading? It's Star Trek Technical Manual. Yes, I'm a sci-fi geek. So when asked to travel Antarctic and space travel, it's very easy for me. It's such a great coincidence. I choose space travel. Why? Because I grew up with science fiction and space travel is the final frontier. There's unlimited things that you can see, unlimited things that you can experience. When we're talking about being adventures, there's no more unlimited adventures than going to space. So what I'm going to do in space? Well, first of all, I'm going to look back on Earth as my home and see how small we are. We are just, just in the wind, to quote a song. And then I'm going to visit planets. First one is Mars. For, um, the Mars is the place where they build starships in the dock of Planetia Utopia. Yes, that's a Star Trek thingy. And then I'm going to travel all around the galaxy, looking for new alien life and try to realize is human really that significant? And another quote I took, I forgot the, the author. We are alone in this universe or not. Either way, it's equally fantastic. Right? That's all from me. Thank you so much. Return to you, Toastmaster Mutia.
Hey, thank you, this master Ferdi. You're truly a Star Trek fanboy, right? I guess, yes, traveling space will be adventurous to see Mars, to see the Earth from the unknown world. Wow. And we will have our next speaker. And yes, this master Wira, are you there, this master Wira?
Hello, this master Wira.
Can we go next?
Yes, master Wira. Which number would you like to choose?
It's Miftah. That's Miftah, by the way. Maybe, because we're, it's not available, so yeah, move to another one.
Yeah.
Perhaps Steph would like to invite one of her friends because she just delivered the table topic speech.
I think I will invite.
Here. Here it is. Hello.
The person has joined.
Yeah, sorry, my, my, all of a sudden, my internet just cracked out all of a sudden. Sorry.
Which number would you like to choose, this master Wira?
Uh, numero ocho. Number eight.
Has been taken.
Oh crap, uh, so number two, numero dos.
Just master Wira, travel to the past or to the future? Travel to the past or to the future, this master Wira?
If for some reason that I have the DeLorean, or I have a DeLorean from Back to the Future or the Farthest from Doctor Who, would I travel to the past or travel to the future? Hmm. I would like to go to the future. I mean, not gonna lie to you, I do have some past that I would like to fix. However, sometimes there will be some precaution or the past basically make me who I am today. sometimes there will be some pre- precaution or the past basically make me who I am today. Yeah, actually, I don't really know much about TARDIS as well. I know a little thing or two about TARDIS, but not a lot about Doctor Who, so yeah. Uh, but when it comes to traveling, I, wait, am I? I think my connection is still bad here, so yeah, I'm hoping for the best. So when it comes to tra- time travel to the past, I would say yes, but it, the past made me who I am today. If I change it, there might be some, there, there might be some changes for better or for worse. I don't want to risk that. So I think I better go to the future because I would like to know the advancement that humans, including myself or others, have built. Like, I remember back in the day when I was still a kid, I like to, I, I was thinking like, I, I would like to drive with somebody, like a person, some, somebody be, when it's, when it's traffic or something like that. And all of a sudden, several years later, there, there's Uber, there is GoCheck, there is Grab and all that. So yeah, I would like to see, uh, more advancement that people are doing in the future. Probably, we will have self-lacing shoes, we might have hoverboard, or probably, I'm ashamed, I don't know. But yeah, if you ask me, I'll do, I'll say, I'll go to the future. That's all from me. Back to you, Titiya.
Yay, thank you, Toastmaster Wira for sharing your opinions about it. I'm so sorry, Toastmaster Stephanie, we cannot have any other speakers, is, it is now ten to five. So that's it, everyone. So that's the table topic session for today. And I guess I would like to call our World Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Mitha.
Okay, thank you so much, fellow Toastmasters. You all are table topic station, appreciate and you can cherish with that table topic station. It's adventurous, right? So yeah, okay, let's go to the next station or the final station, which will be evaluation session. It's amazing, right? This, uh, this session will let you to know about your, what must you improve from your story, from your speech for to, for the next project. So without further ado, I will call upon Toastmaster Chahani, this thing is Toastmaster Chahani, to give, I, I will give you a control to Toastmaster Chahani. Toastmaster Chahani, are you there?
Yes, 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 I'm here. I'm on the beach, yay.
Toastmaster Chahani, before we continue, do you mind if we change the toast of master of the meeting, since Miftah is driving and it's very dangerous?
Okay, okay, Ken. Yes, that's a really good idea. That's a really brilliant idea. So who would like to take over? Wudia, would you like to take over? Oh.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, fellow Toastmasters, now I'm back leading the evaluation session. So fellow Toastmasters, this is going to be your last opportunity to mention the word of the day, that's the adventurous as frequent as possible. So make sure that you mention the word of the day adventurous frequently in this last session. So let's start with the timers report because I think Toastmaster Mutia missed that. So timers report, will, will you please be able to share the timing report of all table topic speakers, Mutia?
Yes, all the table topic speakers are eligible to be voted as they have delivered their speech within ten minutes and thirty seconds. So congratulations, everyone, and please cast your vote to Perspective Toastmaster Stephanie.
Yay, okay. So fellow Toastmasters, please do vote. Who is the best table topic speaker in your opinion? You need to type the name of the best table topic speaker by chatting privately to Perspective Toastmaster Stephanie. So who are they, Mutia? The speakers of table topic session?
There are five speakers in table topic session. First, we have Toastmaster Shauki, and second, we have Perspective Toastmaster Stephanie. Third, we have Toastmaster Adrian, and fourth, we have Toastmaster Ferdi, and last, we have Toastmaster Wira.
Okay, thank you so much, Toastmaster Mutia. So now, please do vote among the adventurous table topic speakers. Who is the best speaker in your opinion? Shauki, Stephanie, Adrian, Ferdi, or Wira? Okay, you need to vote now. Now, while we are waiting for the result of the ballot counter because she's still collecting the vote, now let's start with the report from the evaluation team members. So let's start from the individual evaluator first. The adventurous Toastmaster member, who is a member from Hansman Indonesia Toastmaster Club, Toastmaster Gusti to evaluate, Toastmaster Ayasi, the screen, the stage is yours, Gusti, yay.
Yay, thank you, Madam G, for the time and chance. Okay, I like to pin the timer first, Mutia. Okay, I am ready. Uh, very good afternoon for Toastmasters. Now, we are just watch and listen the presentation or the project delivered by Toastmaster Ayas. And now, it's time for Toastmasters member to evaluate his project. We used to have like this, the member delivers speech and the member will be, will be evaluated for their improvement. And first, we like to give like big congratulations to Toastmaster Ayas. Please give round of applause for him for completing the project, wow. Toastmaster Ayas, wow. Stay sane, it's really related to our condition nowadays. Well, what do I like, what I like from your speech? First, your preparation from your suit. You really have the well preparation for your suit and it was good and it makes you look professional and well prepared, comes up. And I do like the way you actually use the visual aids, it's very clear. The information is enough, the picture, the color is good. And also the choosing of the image is really relatable with your topics. And I do like the way you're actually opening your speech by quoting. If you quote about the same, same something like mental health condition. And also the way you are actually delivering a three things from the health, finance, and happiness. It was good. Also, you put some body gestures. You also put, yeah, notes like, you know, for caliphate, you make like a very tall, high tone when you're saying like really intense and seriously are happy moments. And you start to really calm together when you're saying to like, like a really informational things. So the audience can follow the passes, really good. The visual is really helpful, so it's not be boring for us. And I like to give you like room for improvement, you know. Every time a member delivers speech, must be there are room, room for improvement. First is about, did you really good at the opening and the body, but need improvement on the conclusions. So your project is about the networking, right? You delivering as example for how you make a connection or networking to online. It will be good if you just give like a stress again and repeating about your statement, a stronger conclusion about, hey, this is the importance of the networking and you get the benefit of it as a personal and professional. And the second is about how you can do it, the networking by this era, this pandemic, you know, you can join the webinar or something like that. And you can make add some tips during on there. And after all, I like to waiting for your speech. This all back to you, G.
Thank you, Toastmaster Gusti.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Gusti, for the wonderful evaluation and detailed ones. Now, moving on to the next report from the grammarian. So grammarian, grammarian is Toastmaster Shauki. Okay, are you ready? Oh, not okay.
Wait, 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 let me share my screen real quick. Okay, there you go, everybody can see the screen, right?
Yes.
Yes, so this is my first time using any slated grammar, in the grammarian report, so hopefully be a really good chance for me to learn. And also, we have, everyone can learn also from my evaluation because, to tell you the truth, I'm very sad to say this. There is not much grammatical errors, good job, everyone. Every speaker, every table topic speaker, every evaluators, even though we only have one personal evaluator or saying, you know, speech evaluator, but that's okay. Amazing, amazing, amazing. There is all, there is not a lot of grammatical errors. However, I do point out some of the small things that usually being slipped on, or should I say being, you know, unnoticed. Well, let me. Can you guys see the screen now? Thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up, okay, no thumbs up. Thank you, Toastmaster, Titiya Chahani. Uh, for the first grammatical error, let me ask someone to say the first word, which is how do you feeling? Anyone want to try to say it? How do you feeling? How do you feel?
Where is Oki? Is Oki still there?
No, I guess he lost his connection.
Okay, never mind, never mind. He is truly adventurous that perhaps he wandered somewhere that now we lost him. Oh, there he is. So we just lost you, the adventurous Toastmaster member, Shauki.
Sorry, guys, my connection is super adventurous today. It does not follow my orders right now. Let me share my screen real quick. Yes, thank you, internet. Oh my god, how I love my internet today. I'm gonna slap somebody's face today. No, 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 just joking. So, in terms of the second errors is we hard to do that anymore. We hard to do that anymore. That is not the correct way you say it. Usually, you said this if we don't have a chance to do it a lot anymore. So it's really hard for us to do that anymore, especially in this pandemic. So this is sometimes can be, there is a lot of chance or this kind of words sometimes are being unnoticed. But if you're talking to an actual person, let's say for example in the state, or many people who are not from our country and everything like that, this is a very crucial error. So again, everybody, please do check in terms of this. The second one is you are well preparation. You really well preparation. It should be you are, you are well prepared. You are well prepared with your, a lot of preparation and etc. You delivering us, it should be you delivered us. You delivered us your passion, your compassion, and etc. Now, pronunciation, now this is a little bit of a, I want, I wanna say common mistake because rule sometimes mispronounced as rules. Rule, role, ru- rule, role, it should be role. R, R, O, L, A, role, role. Or in bahasa, R, O, L, E, role. So sometimes it mispronounced to rule, so you need to be careful because that sudden change can change the meaning of the word itself. Role is our role. Rules is the thing that we should follow. So that's it. Now, for a few memorable quotes, we have, this is probably one of my favorite because this really reflects to the condition right now. Stay healthy, stay sane, and I should say stay connected. Sorry for that. Yeah, stay healthy, everyone, stay healthy. Second, you know, we, I emphasize the healthy part a lot. So, second one, if there is a question why, there should be a question why not by Toastmaster Ferdi. The last one is from Toastmaster Ayas, sorry. Now, this is a very good quote because if you guys had a chance to come to this meeting, why not become a Toastmaster? From what, Toastmaster, no. Yes, if there is a question why, there's also a question why not. I really like that quote a lot because it really remnants to the things that we are doing and the things that we should do in the near future. So really good quote right there. And let's hope for the best. I think this is not really a quote, but this is a good reminder for us, for us in the future to always hope for the best by Toastmaster Wira. And again, guys, this is, you know, if you find this grammatical error to not be too informational, I'm very sorry, I'm still learning on this part. But again, everybody here, everybody come here to learn, no matter how old or young you are. Everybody here is learning from each other and hopefully, hopefully, I can see all of you guys in the next session or next meeting and hopefully I can learn a lot more from you guys again. So thank you so much and back to G.
Thank you so much for a very detailed feedback, Toastmaster Shauki, the adventurous Toastmaster Shauki. So Shauki, my message to you is that stay sane, stay sane, stay sane. Right, again, reminding everyone in the evaluation team member, this is going to be your last opportunity to mention the word of the day adventurous as frequent as possible, right? Now, moving on to the last evaluation team member, there is the E N W O D counter. Toastmaster Harta, are you ready? The adventurous member, Harta?
Yeah.
The screen is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam G, this thing is Toastmaster Chahani, kita ambasadi. Okay, for Toastmasters, now you already, you know, speak a lot during this meeting and I will report if you, any of you speak like our WOD, as ventures during this meeting. So if I miss to count yours, just please, uh, inform me. First is Toastmaster Mutia, you said four WOD. Uh, start from I become a, a hand WOD. And this thing is Toastmaster Chahani. You got the highest score, you, you say nine WOD, wow, congratulations. Toastmaster Mitha, you said two WOD. Toastmaster Shauki, you said one. Uh, future Toastmaster Stephanie, you said two. Toastmaster Adrian, you said four. And Toastmaster Ferdi and Wira, did you say any WOD?
Uh, yeah, I just remembered, I forgot. Oh wait, adventurous, ah, there, you can come down.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just mentioned one.
Okay, Toastmaster Ferdi, you said one, yeah, okay. Alright, so this is a report from me as I N W O D. Back to you, Madam G.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Gusti. Right, now my general evaluation as the general evaluator. So I noted that we have displayed plenty of positive attitudes during the meeting. So firstly, everyone tried their best to be supportive toward the speakers by cheering, by clapping, by showing a, a positive and supportive facial expression and trying to maintain the video on and connection, okay? And then, secondly, also, uh, everyone attending the meeting today, in particular, the established Toastmaster members would like to take the role takers, willingly to take the role, the roles as the impromptu role takers. And also the prospective Toastmaster member, prospective Toastmaster Stephanie, thank you so much for your willingness to take over the role of the ballot counter. Well done, or not well done, because you haven't announced it yet. And then, thirdly, the speakers today tried their best to mention the word of the day adventurous as frequent as possible. That's good. And then lastly, if one of the Toastmaster members today mentioned stay healthy, stay healthy and stay sane, so Toastmaster Adrian highlighted, stay safe, stay safe, stay safe. Therefore, thank you, Adrian, for reminding us that safety is over, over everything that, uh, we need to make sure Toastmaster Mitha's safety, so that's why the Tom role gets to be taken over. So the thing that.
I just arrived, I just arrived, no worries.
Oh, okay, yay, you are safe, yay. So, so the feedback is that, so the next time in our next, uh, meeting, I hope we will be able to be more supportive, more supportive in a sense of perhaps because we are muting ourselves, so we are muted. So I think better to display perhaps clapping hands or, or positive and supportive facial expressions, smiling, laughing, so that the speakers can appreciate how is our response toward their speech. So that concludes my general evaluation for today. I will be seeing you again. So that concludes my general evaluation for today. I will be seeing you again in the next meeting. So I hope we will be able to implement being more supportive in our next meetings. Over to you, Tom.
Okay, thank you so much distinguished Toastmaster, yeah, uh, Toastmaster Chahyani. So in my mind, you are Toastmaster Chahyani, so yeah, I don't know why. So for today's meeting, thank you so much and, uh, how you have an enjoy meeting and you have also an adventurous moment that you never, uh, ever remember, forgot, okay? Without further ado, I will call, uh, president to announce it or you can close it also. So yeah. Toastmaster Mutia, the screen is yours. And thank you so much for really care to me.
Hall of Fame.
Yes, I will, I will try to precedent. It's an honor for precedent to announce the Hall of Fame, yeah. Toastmaster Mutia, please announce your winner and then close the meeting.
Yes, the ballot counter is prospective Toastmaster Stephanie. Have you finished counting on the result?
Mista jet like, Mista. Mista jet like.
Yes, I have finished accounting. Thank you. Now I will announce the result. First one, the best prepared speaker is of course Toastmaster Ayasi. Everyone give a round of applause. Yay, silent applause.
Yay.
And the best evaluator is Toastmaster Gusti.
Yay.
And the best table topic speaker, um, it's myself, I think because I have a lot of friends here.
Is it nepotism? Please, please do, please, please clarify, is it nepotism or not?
The power of nepotism.
Chill, kids, chill. Oh my god.
Enough of the party, relax, I'm not judging.
Okay, thank you, prospective Toastmaster Stephanie for your report.
I hand it back to your, uh, to the president. Thank you.
As you're very welcome, prospective Toastmaster Stephanie. Congratulations for being the best speaker on table topic session. Wow, it's awesome to be the best on your first try. Wow. So yes, guys, thank you, everyone. You've done a really great job. I see that DPM Chai is a true happy pill. We do not need amphetamine to have the full energy. We just need DPM Chai, yay. And thank you for the role takers that I cannot mention one by one here. So if you would like to be the prepared speaker for next meeting, everyone just contact me or Toastmaster Lisa. Anyway, congratulations for all the best speaker and evaluators and thank you, everyone, for coming and helping this meeting to run splendidly. And I would like to call our Division B Director, Toastmaster Mista. Do we have any announcement?
Okay, I will have, uh, I will, um, thank all of you from Pediatric Tipto Toastmasters Club for, uh, Toastmasters Leadership Institute for Round One. You made it. And for, uh, I'm waiting for the Round Two, you must at least four exco's to come to TLI. Thank you so much. Back to you. I really appreciate your effort. Thank you so much. Back to you.
Yay. It is indeed our duty to attend the institute. Wow. And we have a distinguished guest here from, wait, Medco, Toastmasters Club, Toastmaster Ferdi. How do you feel about this club?
I really enjoyed the atmosphere, you know, especially the, uh, not contagious, infectious energy from the general evaluator. Best, uh, deserve as an applause, yeah. Please applause for the G. Wow, congratulations. It even rifles the energy of a comedian, actually. That's really nice. So all in all, I really enjoy staying here and I hope if the time is still the same, I hope I can join the, our next meeting in the Pedia, Pedia Tri Club, right? Pedia Tri Club. Okay, that's it for me. Back to you, Toastmaster Mutia.
Yes, anyway, when will be the Medco Toastmasters Club meeting?
Our meeting will usually, uh, every other, oh, sorry, I'm going to use the word that I'm promoting a lot lately. Our meeting is every fortnight on Wednesday. Do you know what fortnight means? Every two weeks. No, it's not the game. Yes, the game comes from the word fortnight. So every bi-weekly on Wednesday at eleven to one PM. I will share the invitation later on through the grapevine that the Toastmaster successfully applied.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Ferdi. So you guys are cordially invited to Medco Toastmasters Club meeting on a fortnight on Wednesday. Wow, the, you guys can learn anywhere to speak freely. You just need to try and try and try again. There is no shame to be someone who's trying. And I would like to call our Toastmasters Shauki as our fellow Toastmasters from SGBD Toastmasters Club.
Yes, thank you so much, Toastmaster Mutia. I will, I already shared the link in the chat, so I'm gonna say hello, everyone. My name is Shauki Zwakwakwizwara. I'm the current SAA Sergeant-at-Ars at SGBD Toastmasters. And I would like to invite you guys to our club meeting on Friday, seven to nine PM. Friday is a special day for us to do a Toastmaster meeting because we are trying to commemorate Women's Equality Day and also Individual Rights Day at the same time. So please do come in our meeting on Friday, seven to nine PM, Friday, seven to nine PM, Friday, seven to nine PM. You can check all the infos, all the IG and all the posts in the link that I just give. And please do also follow our YouTube channel at SGBD Toastmaster for you guys to know the vibe of the meeting. Because I know sometimes you guys are really scared to attend a different atmosphere club. In order for you guys to familiarize with our club vibe, please do check our YouTube channel at sgbd dot Toastmaster. Please subscribe and also share with your friends. That's all for me. Thank you so much. And hopefully I can see you guys on SGBD, SGBD Toastmaster on Friday, seven to nine PM. Please, back to the president of the Pediatric Toastmasters Club.
Hey, thank you, Toastmaster Shauki. You guys can join SBD Toastmasters Club meeting every Friday at seven PM. There will be a lot of people there. And I would like to call Toastmaster Adrian. Thank you for coming on behalf of Toastmaster Aksen.
Uh, not on behalf of him. I was expecting him here, actually. Thank you for having me.
You're muted, Toastmaster Mutia.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Toastmaster Aksen. So when will your meeting be?
Uh, right now, I, I don't think I can continue with the Delta's Master, so because I'm no moving to Indonesia. So I wanted to find a new club here.
Oh, I see. Then I would like to call the guest then, prospective Toastmaster Lisa. Yes, I see that you're very serious to see this club. How do you feel about this meeting?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And, uh, I felt delighted to join this meeting. Uh, I learned a lot, I think, uh, because, uh, I have, uh, I have no many, um, experience with something like this, uh, not usually speaking in English, uh, usually passive English. So this is a good opportunity for me. Thank you so much.
Yay. You're always welcome to join a meeting to learn a lot about, uh, public speaking and more about leadership. Because Pediatric Tipto is a place where you can learn and have fun as well. And I would like to cap, to call prospective Toastmaster Bella. Are you there? Hello, prospective Toastmaster Bella. Yes.
Thank you.
Did you enjoy the meeting?
Yes, I'm very enjoy and I'm very happy, uh, because I meet my, uh, many friends, uh. Uh, sorry if my, for my bad English, English. Uh, I still, uh, learning very, very, uh, very about, uh, English, uh, but in, in Toastmaster. Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is my little perspective, this Master Bella is always fine. We have that first try and everything, you know, and we cannot judge single person from their first try. So I would like to call prospective Toastmaster Stephanie then. How do you feel about being the ballot counter?
Um, I was shocked at first because I didn't know what it means by being a ballot counter. But I guess, um, it's quite fun because I get to see everyone's DM. And yeah, I think it's, uh, this meeting is very fruitful, especially for us to encourage us to be more confident in speaking in English. I hope everyone enjoys it as much as I do. Thank you.
Yay. Thank you, Toastmaster Stephanie. Although you're shocked at the beginning, I believe that you're well adapted to learn more about this club. I see that prospective Toastmaster Waodhi is nodding while Toastmaster Stephanie is talking. Am I right? Did you enjoy our meeting?
Uh, I'm very enjoy because I, I'm so happy to meet, uh, everyone new and, uh, to see, uh, the positive vibe of, of this club. Uh, I'm so happy because, uh, my English is not fluent but, uh, I will try my, uh, best to, uh, join this maybe, uh, in next, uh, meeting. I hope I can learn much from this club. Thank you. I, I am, uh, the, the, so I am, uh, maybe a fan of Stephanie because she is very brave to speak in, uh, uh, in a lot of people that we, uh, on the first meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Toastmaster Waodhi for sharing your thoughts about it. And we're here to encourage you to speak more and not feel judge about it. We always learn here something new. And I guess DPM Chai is already excited about taking picture. Do you have any suggestion for the post, DPM Chai?
So I think that the theme today is the next trip or, uh, adventurous, right? So perhaps, uh, Pepe DS have any idea, um, what is the post? Let's see. Anisha Fazlisia, Anisha Fazlisia, do you have any, any proposal for the post? The, the theme is the next trip and the word of the day is adventurous. So how is the style of adventurous, Anisha? Any idea, Anisha? Or else? Winnie, 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 I see that you are there. Winnie, any proposal? Well, you, you didn't deliver any speeches, so perhaps you have any idea about the post?
All right, um, it's adventurous, right?
Yes.
How about, um, we give the fist like this? I think this is my favorite pose.
Fist?
Fist, yeah. Fist. No, fist.
You wanna punch someone?
Oh, I would, adventurous.
Left hook. Adventurous like this one. But it's like you want to punch someone.
For, for a while.
I think it's closer to Independence Day, isn't it?
Okay, agree. All right, I'm taking the picture. The first page, yeah, the first page. Three, two, one. Another one for the second page. Wow. Still the same, still the same. We don't know who is in the first page and who are in the second page. Three, two, one. Winnie, any idea, any more idea about the post, the second post perhaps?
How about?
Adventurous, next trip.
Okay, perhaps I still feel the Independence Day. So how about we do a salute?
Okay, salute. All right, salute, guys. I'm taking the picture of the page, uh, the, for page number one first. Three, two, one. Second page, sikap sempurna. Three, two, one. Excellent. Well done. I appreciate it.
Thank you, DPM Chai, for taking the picture. So I guess I should now adjourn the meeting by clapping cries. Thank you, Toastmaster Winnie for bringing your troops here and congratulations, everyone, for being
Thank you so much.
President. Congratulations on your new journey.
Well, thank you for having me, everybody. I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.